Good evening, everybody. I'm Adam Clark. Need a motion?
No, because we're going back, so we're not closing anything yet. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Acts NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC, notice of which was sent to the record on the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg, Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Yes.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are no proclamations and/or presentations to give tonight. There are no minutes to approve. So we're going to write to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, invited guests and residents. City manager's report for September 26, 2017. M&amp;M Building Parking Lot Update. We've taken measures to organize the parking lot at the M&amp;M Building. Everyone parking in this lot has a placard issued by the Rec Department. We have worked with surrounding schools and businesses to accommodate the best we can do. Everyone parking there without a placard will be ticketed and towed. A new sign will be installed within two weeks, and the parking lot will notify the parkers and the rules and regulations. This has taken quite an effort by the cooperation of the Traffic Bureau, Jaclyn Stout, and to work with Greg Leocey to identify the list of the people that should be properly parking there and have those privileges. Number two, the two-way conversion of Main Street and State Street is still underway. I'm pleased that the things are progressing. We are making the improvements. The engineering work and the roadway are being inspected, and obviously, we should be done with this project by November. Just as a reminder, leaf pickup reminder, all leaves should be placed in brown recyclable bags, no plastic. Each resident can pick up one bundle, one free bundle of bags with 15 included at the DPW at 120 East Broadway, second floor, starting October 1st. I stress again, this is a voluntary program. The DEP would love for all municipalities to become compliant, but you also understand that this is tough for residents, especially ones that are higher landscapers, to do this. But ultimately, this is a phasing project. Municipalities will be forced to bag their leaves and not leave them. It also is an easier way for us to clean up, because when they rake leaves into the street and then it snows or we have bad weather conditions, it's just a frozen mess that's tough for us to clean up. In regards to New Jersey Transit, the upgrading of railroad grade crossings started on September 11th at Main and Terrace, which has been completed, at Euclid, which has been completed. Anderson Street will begin tomorrow, September 27th, and be completed on October 3rd. And Atlantic Street will begin tomorrow, September 27th, and will be completed by October 3rd also. So unfortunately, because of the problems it would cause, we had to allow for construction on Sunday, which is normally not allowed, but because of rails and the connection for service for residents Monday through Friday, we did not have a choice. And we apologize for the inconvenience for those residents near these crossings, but unfortunately, it could not be helped. And that would complete the city manager's report.
Okay, thank you. With that, let's go right into business. Resolution 346-17.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 30-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic, to allow for certain students residing in Hackensack while attending an institution of higher education in Hackensack to qualify for resident parking permits. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay, may I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward.
Chris Coley, prospect, this is something new that's been, that you're going to do in this town. Doesn't the higher education facilities in Hackensack have sufficient parking for the students that they now have to park on streets where the public are fighting day and night to park? Why are they given special permissions to park on a city street? I think that's wrong on all levels.
That's not what it's about.
I mean, I have to clarify, this is not for students, or just simply students, this is for students who, I'm sorry, this is not. This is for students who are renting property in the city of Hackensack, so they are actually living here, they're paying rent. It's just because the cars may not be registered into Hackensack that they are unable to qualify for a parking permit. So it's not every student, they will have to provide, you know, a lease that shows they are actually physically living in the city during the school year. So this should be a fairly small amount of people, a number of people, I believe, had come to TED with this concern, because they don't have perhaps parking in their rental units, and so they have no place to go.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, let's go on to, I'm sorry. Motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 30-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 347-17.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 31-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic, to add Marion Street as a residence-only-on-street parking area. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward.
Good evening again, Kathleen Salvo, 47 Lurie Street. This is great, but it needs to be enforced, because we have these, you know, we have these all over the place, and they don't get enforced, so it means like they don't exist. So it has to be enforced, and unfortunately, the two businesses that got CFOs, and I don't know how they did it, they bring cars in by tow trucks, which exceed the four-ton restriction that's on that street, and nobody ever says anything about that. I mean, they bring in tons of cars, and they put them all over the place, they're on the sidewalk, they're in the street, they're like all over the place, including the people who work there, they park on the street. So hopefully, if it's enforced, it'll work.
Is there a four-ton limit down there?
People, I'm sorry?
Four-ton limit?
Yeah. The signs say Lafayette, because I had them put up, Marion, all the streets that go from Hudson to River are all four-ton limits, and we have these enormous trucks that go through, except for Lafayette, Hudson Tire is allowed to, during work hours, they're allowed to bring, you know, have deliveries. But these other ones, they bring in like 10 cars at a time on a flatbed or a transport, and it's really bad, because there's a lot of kids that play on the block, and it's very dangerous, and there are few people who live there. The one gentleman got a ticket, because he was forced to park on Hudson Street, because all the Marion Street side, and there's only one side parking was occupied.
You're saying they're bringing the cars in on car carriers?
Yeah.
Not tow trucks, basically?
They bring them in on flatbeds.
Right.
They bring them in on transports. I mean, it's like enormously, they do a big volume, both the two companies that are there. So when they got the CFO, I asked the billing department how that'd happen, and they said they were just going to do like driving people to help to fix. It's not so. They bring, I don't know where they're getting them from. So this street is, it's really bad. So this will help if it's enforced, and I thank you for it, because the people there, the few people who do live there, it's a big burden. Thank you.
Mayor, just for the record, these weight limits that are put on streets are for vehicles that are passing through. If you have a business there or business on that street.
It doesn't work that way.
It doesn't?
No, I saw the code. The code, I challenge you on this. The code for Lafayette Street says, on the code, vehicles are allowed for deliveries, and that says it on there.
And what does those vehicles?
No, deliveries for the tires, not bringing other cars in. It's just.
If you were bringing a car to a station for repair, wouldn't that be a delivery?
No, it's deliveries of merchandise. I'll get you the code for Lafayette Street.
Their merchandise is the car.
Hmm, it's repair in the car.
I did this for.
Why don't we defer to the attorney and have him look it up?
Anyway, anyway, it's really, it's a really burden. And they knocked the signs down. I had to have the street sign moved from one side to the other, because they can't navigate the turn.
Okay, just for the record, the Hackensack Traffic Bureau has done all the research, they're well aware of it, they're the ones that issued the resident parking for the street, so I would assume that they'll take care of it.
I hope so.
I'll make sure that it's properly monitored.
Because we need to enforce it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only? Seeing none, motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
We need a motion to adopt.
Need a motion to adopt ordinance 347-17. Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 31-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 348-17.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 32-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic, to adjust the no parking time on the east side of Cleveland Street for street sweeping.
Okay, may I have a motion, please? To open to the public.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Need a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Offer.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 32-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 349-17.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 33-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 175 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, zoning, to prohibit in all zones the treating and/or disposing of any hazardous medical waste using cold sterilization process. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward.
Do you want me to? Yeah, I was just going to comment, because, you know, I've been in careful communication with the folks who have been encouraging this ordinance, and, you know, there may be some additional steps that we may need to take to deal with this issue. I think the feeling was, let's get something on the books tonight, let's, you know, and then let's go back and see if we need to further address it, because, you know, if it's further changes to the zoning code, we're going to have to have some additional communication with the planning board on that part of it. You know, if we decide to, you know, look at this issue with respect to, you know, nuisance, that may be another area that we can look at. But rather than not have anything and not be protected, you know, the feeling and the recommendation was, let's go forward, let's get something on the books, but let's not end here and continue to see what else we can do to ensure that there's no loopholes or other avenues that would allow medical waste to be disposed of, you know, using our sewer system or in some manner that none of us would be particularly comfortable with. So I just want to put that point on the record.
Good point. Yes, sir.
Mr. Coley?
Mm-hmm.
I was around when the city of Hackensack stopped the incinerator at the Hackensack Hospital. The system, I believe, that was approved by the state. Huh? The system that was approved by the state uses the cold sterilization process. It's a humongous machine, grinds it, sanitizes it, pulverizes it, and dumps it into the sewer system. What system does the city propose that the hospital will use if they cannot incinerate and they can't dump it into the sewer system? Is it a drying method that will be carted and brought to some special landfill? Because right now, it does not have to. It meets all state requirements. Now, if that new nursing home wants to put in an existing system like the hospital has, I don't know how to assist, the city can now say, midstream, time to change the horses. You can't put it in. If they can't put it in, Hackensack Hospital should have to take it out. You can't have that big monstrosity do it, and that dumps more medical waste, body parts, liquids, you name it, goes into that city sewer system. I don't understand, I don't understand, I don't understand this ordinance at all.
First of all, a little misinformation here, Mr. Coley. I've worked, as you know, I work at Hackensack Medical Center. I've been a vendor there since the '90s. Hackensack Medical Center did have what was called a medical waste grinder. All that did was compact medical waste, and then it was sent out through Stericycle, which is a medical waste company, where it was taken to one of five sites across the country, or area where it was incinerated. That was incinerated. To this day, it has still picked up and incinerated all our medical waste at Hackensack University Medical Center. This technique here is called sterilization process. You're talking about the size of the machine, it's a very tiny machine, and it actually grinds up the material using a chemical, which is found to be harmful to fish in waters, and since a lot of our sewers go into, could go into the waterway, that's one of the, one of the big reasons, besides just being medical waste in the area, that we, you know, were opposing this. The other reason we're opposing this is the possibility of other venues that are owned by this company that might bring their medical waste, transporting it through the city, bringing it to this site in order to dispose of it. We were trying to avoid that. Not something we wanted in this city, but Hackensack Medical Center, since I've been involved, has always had their medical waste incinerated, though they did have a machine that ground it up. It was still put in a special container and taken away, off-premise, but it wasn't treated at the hospital.
That was much later. In the '70s, the big incinerator used to work.
The incinerator, yeah, the incinerator was in the '70s, it was taken out, and then they started having their medical waste shipped out.
It was taken out by the health codes.
Yes, absolutely.
And then they put this, they built a special room, put this coal storage in there.
Yep. I worked in that room, I know it well.
So I was there when the engineers showed us how it would work.
Right.
And every waste that that hospital produced came downstairs.
Right.
And went into that machine.
And it was, it went into the machine, it wasn't.
Nothing was taken away, nothing was incinerated.
Oh, no, it was taken away, it wasn't processed. It was, I was there, I worked right there. It was taken away, went into a dumpster, it was taken, a red dumpster, a medical waste dumpster, special dumpster, was picked up and taken away.
That'd be later. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only? Seeing none, motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 33-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 350-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 34-2017, an ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance number 27-2017, adopting the Continental Plaza redevelopment plan consisting of Block 512.01, Lot 6, Block 513, Lot 1, and Block 514, Lot 1. Need a motion?
I need a motion, please.
Offer.
Need a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 34-2017, is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on October 24, 2017, at 8:00 PM, or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby authorized and directed, to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 351-17.
This is a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 352-17.
This is a resolution authorizing Murphy Orlando LLC to represent the city of Hackensack in DeFreeze versus Suez, North America et al., docket number B E R L 6298-17.
And I might just add, this is a slip and fall case. It's just, we're going to assign it to outside counsel every time we do that, because we, in order to make sure that we reserve enough money to be able to pay them, we will adopt a separate resolution.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion?
Need a motion. Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Abstain.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, and payment of bills?
That's, sorry.
Resolution 353-17.
Resolution authorizing the payment of bills.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, with that, we go to the consent agenda. Does anybody see any conflicts in the consent agenda that they may need something pulled? Seeing none, move on with the consent agenda.
Following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. The consent agenda consists of Resolution 354-17 through Resolution 360-17. 354-17 is a resolution expressing opposition to legislative proposals S 1045, which is OMA, for the Open Public Meetings Act, and S 1046 regarding the Oprah, which is Open Public Records Act. Resolution 355-17 is a resolution appointing Raminja Rodas to the Shade Tree Committee for a term to expire on December 31, 2020. Resolution 356-17 is a resolution for the opposition of proposed local finance board rule NJAC 5:30-18.1 and 18.2 regarding employee compensation disclosure. Resolution 357 is a resolution authorizing exemption for 56 Frederick Street, Unit 1, for 2017 tax year for disabled veteran. Resolution 358-17 is a resolution authorizing the extension of Jeanette Diamante's family leave for additional three weeks with return to work on November 6, 2017. Resolution 359-17 is a resolution approving the submission of a 2018 New Jersey Department of Transportation Transit Village grant application and execution of a grant agreement for the Main Street, Streetscape, for additional funding project. And Resolution 360-17 is a resolution approving the submission of a 2018 New Jersey Department of Transportation Municipal Aid Grant application and execution of grant agreement for the Main Street, Streetscape Phase 3 project. And with that, we need a motion.
Need a motion to accept the consent agenda. As it was read, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, with that, need a motion to open to the public, please, for public comments?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk.
The optic is, city of Hackensack has put a couple of nails in the transparency's coffin. First, the abbreviated agenda. I'm sure you've heard from a song, when they own the information, they can bend it all they want. Not sharing, not sharing is not, the book, it just doesn't work. Looking it up online, it just doesn't work. But that's what you choose to do, despite the fact that you, that was your platform four years ago, transparency, that was your promise, but, you know, this is, the taxpayers, we're not entitled to it, we just pay the bill. You're opposing the OMA and Oprah because it might be too cumbersome, it might be too expensive, it might be too whatever, and also, you're opposing the, for the compensation, the employee compensation. I mean, when you guys were on this side, you were fighting for every bit of information you wanted, and now, you're holding it back, you're fighting against it. The OMA, greater access to meetings, Senator Weinberg is a sponsor of that, your buddy, right? How could you oppose that? Even if it's not the best, if you're giving the public more, that's better. But you're not, you're not giving us more, you're giving us less, and continually giving us less. Three minutes, five minutes, John, thank you for saying you're in favor of the five minutes, but you're giving us less. Transparency is dying in Hackensack. It's dying, you're killing it. And you promised, this was your platform four years ago. I know it. I know what you promised, and you're killing it. But, you know, we're paying the bills, while developers get pilots, which, to my knowledge, I know developer has made a payment yet, okay? But we have to pay accelerated tax, and Jim Mangan sat here and said there was a program for homeowners? No, there isn't. There isn't. Homeowners are screwed. If you can't pay it, you're going to get a tax lien. That's it. He sat here and said that. Tax office knows nothing about it, Jim Mangan said, oh, I misspoke. So developers get breaks, the residents, sorry, you get less information, a higher bill, and, you know, what are we getting? I'm not sure. Two rec buildings that we don't even know the maintenance on it, don't know the true cost of it, yeah, but that was a promise that you ran on. But transparency, forget that one. That's old news. Leo, for you to say that there's no time for you to talk amongst yourselves, that's why you should reduce our time to talk? That's total disregard for the residents. I think that's about all. I very rarely use my five minutes, but I can't bank them, I can't transfer them, but transparency, you guys are killing it. You're killing it.
Good evening, Carolyn Davis, Stanley Place.
Carolyn Davis, Stanley Place in Hackensack. On Monday, I made a call to the city manager's office, because I really didn't know where to call, but I wanted to thank him because by Tuesday, the issue I brought up was solved. There had been some sneakers thrown across a line on my street. Don't know what they mean, have many rumors about them, but I wanted them down right away. So they were taken down right away, and I appreciate that. Also, we saw, a couple of weeks ago, they were cleaning the sewers on my street. Very happy about that. I hope that's going to be done on a regular basis, not just when there's a problem. I hope it's done on a regular basis, because as we look at Texas and Mexico and what's going on in Puerto Rico, it could very well be right here.
Mm-hmm.
So I thank you for that. These two, I have my questions, but I'm going to ask them. You can tell me the answers later, however you want to do it. There are some trees on our block. Good trees, bad trees, I don't know. All I know is during Sandy, a huge tree fell down on our block, fell between two houses, just missed the houses. The trees on Stanley Place are very, very, very old and very, very, very large. I saw a tree across the street. Again, I'm not an expert, but, uh, doesn't look like it has any bark on it. Now, it's on the property, so my question is, are inspections done of all trees, or is it only the responsibility of the homeowner to check out their tree? Because I have a feeling that tree is going to come down, if it comes down, it's heading right across the street towards my house.
Right. Go ahead, I can answer that if you want to answer. Well, there's a certain, there's an easement from the curb into the house. Usually it's eight feet, ten feet, which includes the curb, that little grass area between the sidewalk, your sidewalk, and a few feet of your property, where the city has access at any time if should they need to get in there. But if it's on the property inside of that, like in the middle of the yard, that would be the homeowner's responsibility.
But what about, my question then is, when the building department comes, they can make a complaint about your house, about you need to paint your house, or your fence is down, so why can't they, an inspection also be made of a tree and tell a homeowner they needs to have their tree inspected?
Give the address.
Just do me a favor, just give me a, um, a house number and a telephone number, I can take care of this problem. We don't have to.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
My, my next question is, Rite Aid parking lot. I was told, I brought up a dangerous situation in Rite Aid parking lot, and I was told that the city has no authority, the police have no authority, because the parking lot is private owned. Again, it can be private owned, but if something there is dangerous to citizens of the community, I still feel like the city has a right to either get in touch with the owners of their property and say, "This is a dangerous situation, we think you need to take care of it." On Rite, the Rite Aid property, this is the Rite Aid store, okay? This is the, the lane that goes past out to Besake Street, is not named a street, next to the railroad track there with cars.
Behind Dunkin' Donuts, sir.
Okay. There's no stop sign coming this way, there's no stop sign coming this way, and one day, someone's going to have an accident there. I see it happen all the time.
She's saying, if you're going along the front of the Rite Aid, you pass along your map, pass the Rite Aid.
They just turn, and cars are coming.
And you're just making right, and cars are coming, yeah, that makes sense. We can look into that.
And I was told this, so I, I think that the city still should be able to.
It's a new parking lot, they just redid it.
You're talking about on Main Street?
No.
No, no.
On Anderson and Lynden?
It's a private property, but it's a large, very large parking lot, and, uh.
And again, same thing.
Always been used, people use it as a shortcut to go from Besake Street to Anderson.
Okay, now, right behind Dunkin' Donuts, sir.
Right.
So again, that's something I think that should we look into.
That's something we, uh, we.
Look into, because even though it's private owned, my home is private owned.
We can make a recommendation to the owner.
Has to be saved. And my last question is, what's going on with the Eminem Building? I understand from the last meeting that there was a meeting, don't know if that's true or not. I know I wasn't a part of it. It wasn't made public that there was a meeting, as much public interest as there was about it, it should have been public. So my question is, is there another meeting planned, and what is the status? Are we still looking for another building? What's going on with that?
No, we are not looking for another building. We looked at the one and only place we could probably put that building, was Johnson Park. It ended up being cost prohibitive to put it there because of the type of construction necessary to build a building. Matter of fact, the building we would, if, for us to put the building up there would be the same size or smaller than what we have now, and would cost more than double the building that we could put at the Eminem Building. We feel that we have not, uh, we are not going to exceed the parking necessary for, to be using in that building. Most of the parking issues with that building have nothing to do with the Eminem Building. They have to do with the church, and they have to do with residents using that lot. That lot is not a residential lot, it's a lot made for the Eminem Building, for recreation. So it was cost prohibitive to put it there. We've already gone out to bid, and we needed to move forward. It was very important to move forward.
Can I respond?
Go ahead.
Can I just say something for you, Carolyn, let me respond? We did have, we had, basically, there were three meetings in the city. There was a meeting here during the committee of the whole, where our DMR, our city planner, made a presentation on this. He also made the same presentation at the city's planning board meeting, and there was an informal meeting right down in the first ward at the Eminem Building that the mayor and deputy mayor Sims hosted. It was a small get-together of folks. That's, that's a problem. Just let me finish. If you wanted to see that presentation, we have been taping the committee of the whole meeting, so if you go to the city website, if you look at the Cal meeting from August, right, in the beginning of that meeting, you could at least watch Fran's presentation, and you could see the numbers and the comparison between what we could get at Johnson Park versus what we could get down in the old Eminem Building, and it might at least give you more information, and then, of course, we'd be very happy to answer any of your questions.
Well, I'm just, I know, I know the time is almost up, but I'm just going to say that, um, I'm hoping that if I was in that, that, that community, it's not so much just the parking, it's the noise level, it's the interruption of private time, of quiet time. So I hope you don't have issues later, because if I lived in that neighborhood, I would be very upset. That's all I can say. That I'd be very upset with that building there. It's going to have, when you have teenagers, it's going to have a lot of noise, and when it should be peaceful times for them, it's not. And the other thing, too, about the, yes, everything's online, I think it was improper that it was done, because we all asked to be involved in a meeting, and it was done without us.
Carol, I need that address.
Oh, yes.
The telephone number for you.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Carolyn, you're done, huh?
Good night.
Um, I'm shocked, because we didn't know about this meeting. Nobody knew about this meeting. Like Carolyn said, it wasn't publicized, and it wasn't just people from the neighborhood, it was people from all over. And I'm very disappointed with the, with Kathy and John, because we did have, as required by law, we did meet in front of your planning board, at which time, people, I wish that were televised. I wish people in the City of Hackensack knew exactly what was happening here, about being transparent and being whatever. At that planning board, people came not only just from the, from the neighborhood, people came from, from all over the city. We need more than, than to have to dump this building there. It is, it's a burden on the, on the, on the existing neighborhood, but it's also an embarrassment to the City of Hackensack. There's a liquor store there, there's homeless people there, there's, it's just a really bad neighborhood, and I wouldn't want to wait all these years, Sissy and everybody else that's been waiting, to put a recreation center and just put a building, plop a building and call it a recreation center. And when Fran came, came and gave testimony, he said he patented after three locations. Those three locations, we researched, they were campuses like Teaneck and Lo- and Angerwood, they, and Leo, who researched this, they had basketball courts, they had football things, they had baseball things. It wasn't just a building. You don't call a recreation, you put a recreation center in the middle of everything. We had two murders there. We came back and took that neighborhood back. And when I say the element, there's an element. When you put a, a building like this here, people from all over, different towns come in, because they know their kids come in for good reasons, and they hang out, and they stay there, and they're there for the bad reasons. You are jeopardizing the, the whole neighborhood. And to build, and everything that, that we said, it doesn't go with the master plan, you're covering a hundred percent of the land. There's no pervious drainage there, there's only parking on one side of the street, Fran fudges numbers, if he's chasing everybody out of the lot, and there's, the streets are all narrow, there's only one side parking, he can't count anything on the street as being parking, and a fire zone. You have two hundred people there doing a, a tournament, and a fire happens, the whole front of that building has to be yellow, yellow curb for the fire truck. How's the fire truck going to get in there to get the kids? If they stop parking on corners, and you have to navigate a truck around the corner, you can't, you can't save these kids from the fire. There's a lot of things on stake here, not just saying there's no place else to put it. And we were very insulted that nobody from the neighborhood, and nobody from the City of Hackensack was at that meeting. I don't know who was at that meeting. We, we just heard through the grape, I've, I've been asking everybody, nobody I know was at that meeting. I don't know who was there. How you could sneak a meeting in and be transparent, how you don't advertise it, it's, it's very sad. And, and I just wanted to clarify something with the mayor. We said that that's going to be the destruction of that neighborhood, of that church, if it closes. Well, somebody told Father John that we were going to sell it, you were, the city was going to sell it if they didn't put the Eminem Building there, and somebody told somebody else that they were going to put the building department there. So where are these threats coming from? You're going to threaten us, take anything that these kids have here, and, and threaten them, because if we, if you don't have your way, you're going to do something, you're going to sell it, or give it to the building department? The last week of August, every day, there were, the, was the, um, youth academy was there every day on that grass, and they were doing, they were doing maneuvers there every day. That grass is the only grass that those kids have, and they play every day there. If you put a building and block the whole view, we're not going to be able to, I was sitting next to a police officer, and he said, "How are we going to man, how are we going to monitor this thing when the kids come out? We don't, it's crowded, they could be beating each other up and everything else. They have tournaments, these kids fight when they come out. We don't need this. We had two murders there, we have the neighborhood back, these are working people that need to go to sleep at night." And the decal thing, I, I wasn't here, can, we stop the clock, and you just tell me what you said about the, about the decals, or about the placards, what do you call them?
Tell her afterward.
I didn't hear that, because I had to go pick up Ruth. You're going to have, you, you have decals on the sun, on, during the week? The, the school has decals that they can park there. That's fine, but the, the sign that's in existence, because we don't think it's a municipal lot, you're going to need a resolution.
It's going to be, the sign is going to be replaced.
Mm-hmm.
So.
You're going to just rescind the sign that's been there forever? Okay.
We're going to, we're going to change the sign.
Mm-hmm.
And update the placard, so people are either compliant with that, that have privileges to park there, or they don't.
Okay, because the sign, like, can I tell everybody what the sign reads now? The sign reads that you need a decal to park there until five, and after five, and you got to park there. So now, when there's snow in the neighborhood, that these people only have one side, and it's narrow, they usually park there. When there's street sweeping, they usually park there. So you're going to, you're going to take that all the way from this neighborhood, from the neighborhood?
We're at five.
Because you don't care, because this is what you want. I mean, you know what, we need a meeting. This, if you need to be transparent, we need another meeting.
We are transparent, ma'am.
You're not transparent. You snuck the meeting in without any public notice.
Five minutes is up, Mrs. Salvo.
They don't want to hear it. So you know what, why don't you just limit?
Excuse me, your five minutes is up, Mrs. Salvo.
Don't give five minutes, give three minutes, why don't you just put the egg waters in everybody?
Well, you've had five minutes, not three, and now you're at about five and a half.
Don't give any public.
Thank you.
They don't want to hear it, because you don't listen, they don't care.
Next. Mr. Servo.
Our name's Rich Servo. I'm on Spring Valley Avenue in Hackensack, and it's still a disaster on Spring Valley. I just want to start with that, okay? It's, it's, uh, it's a heavy equipment, buses, constant traffic, it's, it's a disaster, okay? Also, Hackensack is becoming a traffic disaster. I mean, I know you, you've got some kind of construction going on, but going south in the morning, forget it. River Street is a disaster in the morning now, going south. Check it out. Get a cop out there or something, okay? It's, it's bad news to, because it's, it's the only avenue going south, unless you go up to Summit, and no one goes up to Summit if they want to go south towards the Little Ferry Circle. So, that's that. A couple of things, this, doesn't, doesn't this resolution usually have an explanation of things in it? Where's Albert Dev? I thought there was an explanation of each resolution. No longer is that the case? Like, what is the authorization of tax refunds? Who's getting a tax refund? My taxes went up. So there's no explanation of these revs, resolutions in the docket now. Am I correct? Am I missing something?
Correct.
Okay? There's no, there's no, nothing in, in the docket, Albert? So, okay, the, uh, the bags for, for leaves, hey, look, that's a lot of extra work for a homeowner, let me tell you, is to fill those bags, put them on the curb, have them take them away. I mean, it was easier to just, you know, of course, plow them into the, into the street. And I brought up, uh, months ago, when Mr. Trosse was here, about, how about using these leaves and, and having them collected, we could build a little bio plant and, and make bio fuel, and, and actually make money with them? They go to waste every year. These leaves fall from the, from the trees, and we're paying to pick them up, why not turn them into cash? They, they can be turned into fuel if, if we had the wherewithal to build some kind of plant. Mr. Trosse, at one point, said, "Well, it's not a bad idea," and he's gone now, so, so that's, that's that. Also, the, uh, the, the tax, uh, the tax breaks, the tax giveaways to developers in this town, it, it seems to go quiet, talking about that. Maybe that was something that people were going at during the election cycle, but let's keep it, keep it, let's keep talking about it, because my taxes went up, and these people are getting thirty-year tax breaks? What, what's that all about? My taxes went up seven and a half percent on, you know, probably one of the most modest houses in Hackensack. It's, it's just a, a small little house. Why would my taxes go up seven and a half percent, and you're giving a guy downtown thirty years tax break to build his building whenever he wants to, okay? What is, what's it all about, John? Please. And, uh, some of the, some of the answers you gave last week about my questions, I my questions, I did hang around, and you did answer, but you didn't answer all of them. And you didn't answer the one about why did my taxes go up 7.5%? You didn't say a word about that. Also, the hospital, you know, the hospital mix-up after, you know, there was talk about doing away with the nonprofit status that they have. Now, that's going to happen. That has to happen, because they are making a profit there. There's no question, okay? There's been a court ruling on it. You said, "Oh, yeah, okay, yeah," but the governor pocketed something. It was a veto, he pocketed the veto. But isn't it a leader's job, or wouldn't it be your job to maybe keep that dialogue going? Maybe, you know, talk to the governor about it? I mean, do you talk to any levels of government other than your council? Do you talk to the county about giving us a break because we have so many untaxed buildings here?
We just had a meeting.
Do you do that?
We just had a meeting last week.
We had a meeting last week.
Did you get anywhere with it? Did you get anywhere with it?
We're working on it.
I have a follow-up meeting in another week.
Okay. So they're going to maybe lower the tax rate here or something? That would be a fair thing to do. I mean...
More of a shared services type of discussion.
Yeah, I know, but, look, all those buildings that are untaxed...
We had that conversation.
Okay. So what is it about the homeowners bearing, you know, the burden of all of what's going on? All of your pet projects, your redevelopment, which is sort of scattered? I mean, what's...
Your five is up, Mr. Servo. Hope you enjoyed your last extra two minutes.
Thanks a lot. When are we going to vote on, you know, maybe 10 minutes at the podium? Why not? Why can't we vote on that? Isn't that something that the council should vote on? You know, increasing public time to 10 minutes? Stephanie, you don't think so?
No. I need to get home. I need to get home before 2:00.
She has to get home.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Servo. Anybody else in the public would like to speak?
Chris Coley, I'm here in regards to Unico. I don't know if it's been publicized yet, but Kathy Salvo was this year's Citizen of the Year for Unico, and she will be celebrated at Columbus Park on Columbus Day. I don't see anything in the mail or in the newspaper, but I figured with the TV that it would get out to the public, and that's just what I want to report.
Yep. We will be there.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else in the public? Taking down motion to close?
Offer.
Need a second. Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. And as noted before, we're going back into closed session. We don't need to take any action at this point. We will when we come out, though.
We should speak.
No, no.
You want to speak? Yes. Sorry, Stephanie?
Okay.
You're right.
I want to thank the gentleman that came out today. They're opening new restaurants. It's nice to see people coming in and believing in the city. Also, the other gentleman that graduated from Hackensack, a lot of accomplishments he's had. I also want to thank Lared Rodriguez, the Vice President of Board of Ed. She invited me to come out to an event with Congressman Gotheimer. I think this just goes to show the relationship between the city and the Board of Ed. It's heading in the right direction, and I appreciate the invitation. In regards to the length of the minutes, everyone has a chance to speak, and it's important. I think that we get a lot accomplished when we're here. I think three minutes is enough time. You do have two chances to speak at each meeting. Right. But also, I'm a big believer in communication through other avenues. So you can write emails, you can come in and speak to different people. It doesn't have to be, a lot of times, a lengthy conversation. Whenever I have concerns at my children's school, or, you know, positive or negative, I can write an email, I could stop in to speak to people. So there's other ways to do that as well. I understand, I understand. I also want to...
Go ahead.
I also want to thank Ms. Salvo. She does have a lot to say in regards to her neighborhood, and I appreciate that. I think that there are issues sometimes with things going on in different areas of town that have to be addressed, and I'm a firm believer, and if you see something, say something. So if you see something that's not right, you know, you should make a phone call, or write an email, or express your concerns. And I want to thank everyone for coming out, and have a great night.
Thank you, Steph. For the benefit of some folks that weren't at the committee of the whole, Fran from DMR gave a presentation about streetscapes. We're looking at what we're doing in our downtown, what our streets should look like, trying to make them uniform and pleasant, and definitely up to date, and do it in a way that's cost-effective to the city. He mentioned that Boswell Engineering, in conjunction with DMR, and in conjunction with Ted and his staff, so far, the city has secured $1.5 million in grant money to do some of these streetscape improvements, and that's wonderful. And as you see on some of the resolutions tonight, we're continuing to apply for more grants. And, you know, this is definitely a win-win for the city, that we get to improve our downtown, we get to improve our streets, and we have partners that are helping us pay for this. So that's great. There was also a gentleman that came to the committee of the whole and asked us to look into participating at a breast cancer walk on October 7th. Sounds like a very worthwhile cause. I believe data was given, and forms were given to the city manager. They will be available downstairs, you know, in his office, for those that want to collect them and participate. All of the money's collected at this breast cancer walk will go to the John Thorac Cancer Center, and a very worthwhile cause. We're going to try and get out there on October 7th. It will be held at Hackensack High School, and it will be held, you know, at the track, where the walking will be done in a very safe environment for folks. Bringing folks up to date on FAA, the FAA, the next quarterly meeting is October 25th at 7:00 PM, and that's at the airport building on Munaki Avenue there in Teterboro. So interested parties, you know, get yourselves out there and hear what they have to say. They are doing the feasibility study. We continue to be in communication with one another about going over these options, and hopefully they'll have some answers or some results of where they are at that meeting. So it's an important meeting for Hackensack. Thank you to the folks that are calling in, the low-flying planes, that is important. And we have been getting pictures that people are sending. I think actually Leo took a bunch of pictures as well from a soccer game. So, you know, let's continue to not forget about the cause that affects so many of our residents. I also want to thank you, Ms. Davis, for giving some thanks to Ted, our city manager. I think, you know, that there is good communication going on with the city, and we have to give our city manager and the employees credit for that. You know, talk about communication and communication at meetings. You know, you don't have to wait till a council meeting when you have a problem. You know, you come in, and that office door is always open, and someone is there and willing to listen and willing to help. And, you know, that's a way to get things done, and get them done in a timely manner. And we don't always get thanked for it, so I appreciate you, Ms. Davis, coming and bringing that to our attention. It's nice to hear some good news once in a while as well. Everybody have a good night, and thanks for coming.
Thank you. David?
I want to thank all who contributed, especially our city employees who made contributions to our school supply drive. We were able to fill 11 backpacks that were given to the high school drop-in center. Unfortunately, I must note, some contributions were taken from the donation box downstairs in the lobby. Hopefully, the items were given to a student in need. The past week, there were two brand openings for new businesses that opened in the city. The first one was on a dentist's office at 62 Summit Avenue, state of the art. If you have any dental problems, I think you should check in now. The second was Paula's Soul Food Cafe. It's located at 331 Main Street. This is the first soul food establishment in the city in the last five years. The establishment is one that was needed to serve more of the extensive diverse population of the city. It is nice to be able to experience a different type of food, culture every day on Main Street, from Cuban to Greek, to Spanish, to American, and now soul food. Bonus, you can take advantage of the $7.00 lunch. It's well worth it. Our two splash parks are now closed for the winter, and will reopen up Memorial Day 2018. However, our Wednesday open swim night at high school is in session from 6:00 to 8:00 every Wednesday, weekdays. I have a new request. If we could, put a donation box downstairs to help and aid those in Puerto Rico and Mexico. Recommendations are canned foods, pain medicine, antibiotics cream, flashlights, batteries, soap, first aid kit, toiletry, diapers, toothbrushes, paste, et cetera. Lastly, as Deputy Mayor said, we're going to have that step for breast cancer walk at the Hackensack High School track. It starts at 8:00 AM. The registration fee is $10.00 per person. You get one, you get to walk one lap, make a donation. All the proceeds will go to Hackensack Medical Center, Betty Tosselli Breast Cancer Center. As I said, I'm putting together a team. Hopefully, my colleagues will do the same. And here is my little supplies for the, if you want to start the box downstairs for the...
Nice.
Toilet paper, ointments, ibuprofen, toothpaste, soap. We'll pick this up. The plane is leaving October 7th, so we want to fill this box up as soon as possible. We will pick it up October 6th downstairs. Thank you. Get home, stay.
Thank you, David. Leo?
Well, I'd be there working with you in the high school. I was there last night, and the soccer team from the high school beat Indian Hills 72. And I am really happy to know that for the time, maybe three or four kids already got offers scholarship to go to college. And it's another kid from Hackensack that played for St. Benedict in a scholarship, okay? And all these kids are looking good, and they beat a good team. I am glad that the rail crossing, they are getting done. That's going to be good for everybody, because now they can go over the track really smooth. And we continue to work with the M&amp;M Building to see what are we going to do. And right now, yes, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Okay. I just want to address the leaf situation, which the city manager touched on briefly before. I'm not a big advocate of bags, but I am a big advocate of helping the city, and I think the bags would be a tremendous help to the city. So again, I'm asking residents to use bags. I'm going to give it a try. Again, it's a voluntary program. Putting your leaves in the street is still permissible, but we're going to ask that you bag them. The reason the bagging helps is it keeps them out of our sewers, keeps them from blowing all over the streets, and have to be collected again. A lot of different reasons, but it's a big help. I know, you know, if you think back in time, none of us used to recycle. We used to throw everything in one garbage, and we all got used to doing that. So maybe eventually we'll get used to doing this and putting the leaves in bags. I did find that it helps if you go to Home Depot, and it's very cheap. I think it's six bucks. It's a cardboard sleeve. You slide inside the bag, which helps tremendously with putting the leaves in, so I would recommend getting one of those if you're going to try it. Transparency. I do not agree with us being non-transparent. This council is the first council to televise meetings. This council was the first one to put them on the internet. This council was the first one to put them on television, two channels. This council was the first one to televise the council of the hall meetings, which is the first meeting we have. Everybody in the city now has much more access, especially seniors who can't get out. Students may want to watch, for whatever reason, but people have access to these meetings. Times have changed, too. I mean, though I am a big proponent of the five minutes, I never really had an issue with five minutes. I will say this, a lot of things are done differently than they were in the past, with the fact that these meetings are watched from the outside. People will now call City Hall with an issue. People will now call a council member with an issue, and it's handled that way. And that's absolutely no different than being face-to-face here. So I think the transparency is actually more transparent than any past council that this city's ever seen. Ms. Davis, I'm glad you brought some of those issues. We'll look into that tree issue. I'm glad the sewers are being dealt with down by you. We know we've been looking at that area pretty closely. I want to thank you for the kudos to Ted, because he deserves it. I want to thank Kathy for all of her work with Teterboro, along with the condo co-op board people and everybody living on Prospect. This is a big thing, guys. We never have garnered this much attention, and we're garnering attention because we're making noise. Not as much noise as the planes, but we're making noise. So keep it up. For those out there in TV land, if you see a plane flying low, or hear a very loud plane, you can go online and call the hotline number. It's on our website for Teterboro. It's called Tanac, and get the number and call them up. Mr. Servo, I think I pretty much, as far as the hospitals go, and, you know, how that was being dealt with, I think I went into a lot of detail on that. I can't answer why you got a 7.5% increase, because I don't know what your assessment on your house was before, and what the assessment was. If you want to sit down with me and show me the numbers, I would look at it. I'd be glad to. But I don't have your numbers. I totally disagree on, again, I'm going to bring it up again, because you brought it up again, on the pilots being a massive tax break. Again, properties that were paying less than $60,000 a year in taxes, once they're built, will be paying close to $700,000 a year in taxes. That's, you know, a tremendous increase for the city. Once these buildings are up, yes, they take time. Somebody mentioned we haven't seen payments from pilots yet. We're still negotiating.
There's only one that's open.
Yeah, there's only one that's open, so we're waiting on that. Yes, we still have to pay our taxes, yeah. But once this money comes, hey, this doesn't happen overnight, folks. This is a plan, a long planned process. You know, they just don't come up and dump the money. All right. M&amp;M Building. As I spoke to last time, and talk about transparent, this building was advertised for two years before we even had discussions on moving it. It was on boards in this building, sitting downstairs. It was presented, I believe, down at St. Anthony's Church, down in that area, one night. There's been discussion about it. It was in probably 14 different pieces of campaign literature that we were going to do this. Plus, our last campaign talked about redoing the M&amp;M Building. So this building has been talked about. Matter of fact, I'm looking at Mr. Coley. Mr. Coley is talking about the Dave Sims Basketball Dome Arena two to three years ago. So this is nothing new to the city of Hackensack. The fact that several people decided, and it's the fact that several people decided to bring it up and make it a bigger issue than it really is, after we awarded the bid to a contractor, mind you, all right, which is an issue. And I won't go into what the issue is, but it's a big issue. The fact that that was done doesn't make it right. This is nothing new. This building's been planned and going up and progressing for two years to get to this point. And for somebody to do this, you know, it took us off our game. People came, we listened like we always do. We looked at quite an expense to the city to try to move it, just to look at moving it, because these studies are not free. That's a large increase incurred by the taxpayer just to try to move it, and it didn't make sense. It just didn't make sense. It made no sense at all. For half the building at almost one and a half times the price. It just made no sense. So we weren't going to do that, and that's why we made the decision we made. And yes, there was a courtesy review at the planning board. And the M&amp;M Building itself, you talked about drainage. There will be drainage for that building. That's all part of the plan, is to have drainage on that building. You can't have just impervious surface. Where else? What else did I have? We talked about the meetings. Again, I think the walk that we're talking about, the breast cancer walk, I have a couple of close friends that are affected by breast cancer. It doesn't affect just women, it affects men, too. It's a great idea. Everybody go out there, get involved, get some people involved, get a sign-up sheet, get a dozen friends and come out for an hour or so and walk. It won't kill you, and it'll help somebody else from dying. So everybody have a good night and get home safely. Thank you. Need a motion to go? Oh, I don't need a motion, go in the back?
No, because the word's still over.
No, all right. Good night, all.
Can I call back?
Yes.
No, no, please, remind me.
Right.
It's me.
Right.
I have one more question.
Right.
I want to go to the other gentleman.
No, no, I get that.
Motion to close the executive session.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
And the motion to close the council.
And the motion to close the council of the hall meeting.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
And the motion to close the regular meeting.
Motion to close the regular meeting of the city of Hackensack City Council.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye, aye.